Okay, hello everyone. It is 4:30 and I would like to call the Audit Committee meeting to order. Thank you everyone for being here. My name is Patty Sullivan and I am the PPS Board Member representing Zone Three and I am the Chair of this Audit Committee. And I'm excited to welcome our student representative to the Audit Committee. Thank you for your willingness to serve on this committee. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I guess I'm going to. Would you like to introduce yourself to the committee? Talk about the school you're from and anything else you'd like to share?
Um...
Yeah, push the green...
Sure. I'm Evan Cole. I go to Grant High School and I'm one of the two DSC representatives for Grant. I don't think there's anything I'd like to say at the moment other than I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with all of you and I look forward to the year ahead.
Great.
I'm a junior, yeah.
Well, thank you for being willing to join us. Okay, starting at the legal end, would you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. Hi, I'm Andrea Shears, one of the attorneys in the General Counsel's Office.
I'm Jennifer Samuels, she/her, and I'm a community member of this Audit Committee.
Hi, I'm Caroline Zabikowski, she/her, and I'm also a community member on the Audit Committee.
I'm Stephanie Engelsman. I'm the Zone Six Representative on the Board of Education.
And I think Director Split, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
My curse of the hour commute to get to this meeting has happened once again, only this time self-inflicted as I got on I-5 South in downtown Portland for some reason. But I'm on my way back. And I am the Zone One Representative which is in southwest Portland. And I will be there in about 20 minutes.
Okay, thank you, Christian. Thank you for making it online.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean goodness gracious, I can't believe I did it.
And I'm Janice Hansen, District Internal Auditor.
Okay, thank you everyone. Roseanne, do we have anyone signed up for public testimony? Okay, let's get started. I'd like to start by giving an update on a couple of things we talked about in our last meeting. First, I reached out to the Chair of the Board to talk about scheduling a July Audit Committee meeting. He said that this was discussed at an agenda-setting meeting and it was decided that it would be best to have the Board Audit, the Bond Auditors, present to the entire Board and the BAC at the Board Work Session in July or August. I ran this idea by our internal auditor and she agrees that this is a good plan, the best way to get us all together. Secondly, on Tuesday of this week in the regular Board meeting, I provided the full Board and management the recommendation from the Audit Committee to follow up on the outstanding Bond Audit recommendations to be done in the committees identified by our internal auditor. I will be coordinating with the Chairs of the other committees to bring regular updates on the progress. I was also happy to hear Director Split, who is the Board's Liaison to the BAC, and Director LaForte, the Chair of the Facilities Committee, Facilities Improvement and Oversight Committee. They're both are coordinating with each other to work on the recommendations that were assigned to both the BAC and the Facilities Committee. Also, Director Split, you mentioned, and we didn't follow up on it, about working together on the BAC Charter. Is that something you'd like to say anything about?
I'm happy to... The Bond Accountability Committee is working on an update to their charter to add in obligations related to the 2025 bond passage. And there were some recommendations in the bond audit about that committee's charter. So I thought it would just be helpful for the Board and/or Audit Committee members to just have some awareness of that process unfolding and have an opportunity if there's anything in the charter per that bond audit that we want to make sure they get into the charter before they adopt it. It just made sense to me to be able to kind of cross that item off the list of the bond audit to-do list since they're updating the charter anyway.
Okay.
Does that do the trick, Patty, or Director Sullivan?
Yeah, we'll figure out how to work on that together. We also have a status update on the bond audit recommendations on our agenda for the January or February Audit Committee meeting. So we'll get to check in on that progress then. Okay, let's see. Next on our agenda for today is to discuss any updates to the 2025-26 Audit Committee Work Plan and Meeting Agendas document. Janice, could you go over those updates with us, please?
Yes, thank you. So like we had in our first meeting, I provided the Audit Committee's work plan and proposed meeting agendas. So you have that document. If you flip to page two, I wrote "completed" over the agenda for our last Audit Committee meeting because I love to check things off my list. But you see for the November 6th meeting, originally we had a little bit different of an agenda, so I just highlighted at the bottom what the changes were for today's agenda. And if you flip to the next page where it lists the December 4th meeting, we are planning just a slight modification to the agenda for the December 4th meeting also. So those updates are highlighted for you below as well. Those were the two changes that have been made so far to this document, so everything else is still the same as we talked about in the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I'm glad we added that other December meeting.
Yes.
So we don't have to go too long. Okay.
I think Michelle...
I haven't heard anything new about the... Let's see.
Director Sullivan? Michelle is online.
Yeah. Oh, Michelle, sorry. I didn't see you up there with your name. Okay, yes, do you have anything to report?
I...we have not received any additional information, so we'll be sure and send an update when we have one.
Okay, good. So for now, we're going to continue moving forward with the current plan for a virtual Audit Committee meeting at noon on December 17th. For the purpose of receiving the presentation from the external auditors. We're applying...
Is it 17th or 18th?
I think it's 7th.
I just wrote it down.
Oh, no, I wrote 18th in the meeting agenda. I'm so sorry. It is the 17th. Good catch. I'll get that updated.
Oh, okay, great. Thanks for checking. Don't want to lose my notes. Okay, next item on the agenda. This is the important one for today. This is the status of the implementation of the Contract Audit Recommendations. Thank you, Dr. Adams. Really glad to have you here to talk about this. Janice, could you provide us a little background information to prepare us for this conversation?
Thank you. So I just wanted to provide some context and framing for the discussion. The Contract Audit was completed back in 2020 and that was a really long time ago. It feels like forever at this point. But the purpose of that contract man...or the purpose of the Contract Audit was to focus in on management of personal service contracts related to student-facing services directly. Although the district manages a wide variety of personal service contracts, about 400 in total, when you narrow the scope to personal service contracts that are for student-facing services, that number comes way down and there is only a total of 51 personal service contracts that are active in the school district for student-facing services. Of those 51 contracts, 23 of them are managed by Dr. Adams and his team. So I was recently asked about the other personal service contracts that are not managed by Dr. Adams' team and why it appears that Dr. Adams and his team are solely responsible for the implementation of these recommendations. And I just want to be clear that that's not the case. The...there are other contract managers throughout the district that have a personal service contract or maybe two. However, there is not any other personal contract manager or team throughout the district that manages more than two or three. So when we think about capacity, you know, the Office of Internal Performance Audit, we're very small. There's just the two of us. And so given our limited capacity, we must prioritize following our follow-up efforts on the contracts representing the largest portion of the district's spending, which in this case is Dr. Adams' team. So I just wanted to put that out there. It was not our intent to make it seem like Dr. Adams' team is solely responsible. There are other contracts that are out there. I just want to explain that his team manages 75% of the total dollar amount of all district spending for student-facing service contracts. And so that is why, at least from my position, we have focused in on working and asking Dr. Adams to come to the Audit Committee to provide updates. However, I do want to mention that if district management would like to bring other contract managers to the Audit Committee to talk about how they've been implementing those recommendations, I don't think we would say no. So maybe we'll hear from other contract managers in the future.
Okay, Dr. Adams, goes to you.
Good evening, Committee Members. Chair Sullivan, it's good to see you all and be with you. For those of you I haven't met, my name is Renard Adams. I come from Baltimore, Maryland. I started my career as a one-to-one aide working with a student with multiple disabilities. And my first educational training was as a special educator. I was a middle school special ed teacher, an elementary assistant principal of a comprehensive high school in charge of the special ed program, and then a high school assistant principal at a all-special-needs high school before joining Baltimore County and becoming a coordinator of special education, compliance, and instructional support. That was before...I've always been a data guy, but that was sort of my life before I was assigned to be in data offices in my previous experiences. And I share all that to say I'm very familiar with audits. As a special educator and someone who's in charge, who was in charge of district-wide compliance, I...and someone who worked in a school, I was used to auditing IEPs of students in the district and having the state come in and audit us. I did want to...I appreciate Janice's explanation and clarification because we have had media outlets assume that this contract...this contract conversation is about all PPS contracts and it is not. I wasn't aware that the little over $7 million that I'm responsible for was 75% of the cost. I thought there were some higher areas in other...with other chiefs, but I'll love to see those data, Janice. What I do want to share before I get into sort of the back and forth with the audit recommendations is I appreciate...this audit occurred before I arrived. I arrived in 2021 and I've had these contracts under my purview for about two years now. And in that time, I feel like we've made tremendous progress because we've checked a lot of things off of the list in the two years that I've been overseeing these contracts. One of the ongoing concerns from staff members and from community partners is that the audit only included them. These are all black and brown-facing organizations and there's an...I wanted to just share and name an ongoing concern that it appears as if we might be...PPS might be holding community partners to a higher standard and a more intense amount of scrutiny than we do other contractors or sets of contractors. I don't know, Janice, if anyone was going to willingly come and testify here except me. I'm not...I'm good with it, but I don't know that we'll have other particular contract managers signing up for that. So with that said, I wanted to just walk through, if that's possible, the current recommendations that have not been marked as met and just respond to the Office of Internal Performance Audit comments. We're working hard to close this audit. Hey, welcome, Director Split. And we want it to be closed because we want to be about the business of actually spending our time observing the services that our students are receiving in schools and not necessarily in all of the paperwork. So the first recommendation talked about performance reviews. And we did perform performance reviews and the Board received that memo. And the most recent comments from the Office of Internal Audit talked about the performance reviews not occurring before contracts were re-awarded. And I want to explain why that was. One, I want to explain that our performance review of contracts is not limited to just the deliverables in the contract. What we mostly like to focus on is whether or not partners are actually delivering on the services they say they're going to deliver on for students across our district. And we do that by site...unannounced site visits and communications with our building principals. And you'll notice, if you had a chance to read through the memo, without...before clicking all the mini-links, we have three...we had three partners that we worked with last year that we're not working with this year. One of those partners unfortunately went out of business. The other two were non-renewed based on the fact that they were not able to start service provision for students. And so there were no services provided, we did not make payment, and we decided not to continue working with those partners again. So we will continue to do those performance reviews. Two things about those. When we look at some of the outcome data that partners list, it really takes us until we have all of our end-of-year data to really see if they met those targets and standards. And then what also happened, we have greatly reduced capacity. One of the departments that we basically eliminated through last budget cycle was the Department of Research and Evaluation. So the racial equity and social justice team, who are not researchers, have a certain amount of capacity to analyze those goals. And so what we're going to do moving forward is make sure that the performance outcomes that partners put in their scopes of work are within our evaluative capacity to make sure there isn't any sort of disconnect there. If you have questions, anytime, just stop me because you know I'll steamroll and just talk.
You talked about putting your valued capacity. So what's that actually mean?
It means we will still have partners that have outcomes in their scopes of work in their contracts and we'll make sure, for example, here's an example I'd like to give because the office actually identified this. A partner may have had third-grade reading, increasing third-grade reading as a goal. Well, as you know, we don't get those data until well after the school year is over. And my...the res day team, unlike the research team, does not have individual...access to individual student data in that way. So it became an unfortunate casualty of our reductions and as it hit against our current capacity to examine goals like that that were related to OSAS.
Yeah, that was a question I had just in reading through some of the narratives. It sounded like a frustration with some of the people was not being able to get that information.
Yes.
And is there any way to have it so that they can?
Well, I'm not a...we aren't allowed as a district to release the information until the embargo lifts, which is a challenge, you know? The data are quite delayed. So what we will do, the other...this hits on another topic, but what we will do is continue to align to the District Continuous Improvement Plan as our schools do because we want everybody to sort of be rolling in the same direction. And then we can think about what are some leading indicators of those areas of the District Improvement Plan, just as we talked about when we had the World Cafe experience with the Board? What are those leading indicators we can look at to see that progress is being made? So we can look at that.
Yeah, and share that with...yeah.
Yes.
Quickly, I was thinking about what you said about you don't have the data in time, but it seems that the first time would be delayed because you don't have the data in time. And then every other year would be delayed, but it would still be on a rolling basis that we would see the...right, like what am I...I'm so new to this. I still haven't quite figured out what this is, honestly. I'm trying to figure this all out. But if I'm thinking about it just in my own world, the first time you do something, even if it's in October and the contract renewal was June, but you didn't get the data till October, so you do it in October, it's delayed for that first time. But then the next year, you would have the same...you know, you would have on a cycle that's always two months after the contract renewal, but for the next year's contract renewal, you will have seen that maybe either things are slipping or things are going the way that you hope.
Sure. We can certainly look into that. One of the things I also wanted to clarify is our partners have aligned to our district plan per our direction. However, their role isn't typically academically focused. It's culturally specific mentorship, support, and wraparound services for students, which hopefully...which are the strategies that they employ are on our website and those are all research-based and evidence-backed. And hopefully those strategies do things like allow students to see and interact with people who look like them and would then encourage them to attend more and be in class more. And so we're looking at those types of things and certainly take your comments, Director Engelsman, and to...we'll take your comments into consideration when we think about how we may give the Board timely information and have it be thorough and complete. Because our effort was try to get the report here as soon as possible because we typically had provided the memo in June when the contracts came. However, the contracts were approved for four years and so we just had a little bit of a...things weren't aligned in the way that I would most hope that they would be this...for this cycle.
I'll weigh in on this too. Oh, you please, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I had two quick things. I just...I was concerned to hear, Dr. Adams, your comment in there about the organizations who are primarily black and brown organizations, not being curious or not...or feeling like they were potentially targeted. And I'm going to respectfully say, I'm just going to give a very quick personal. I had been running an organization who was not under your department and I personally did participate in the...in the review of contracts in 2020 with an organization that doesn't fall under your purview as a contract manager. So I wonder if there's some repair that needs to happen there around making sure that everybody...that it is transparent and everybody does know what went...what went on. Secondly, also as a person who's been running nonprofits, I feel like I have a lot of firsthand experience with people asking for us to report data on which we have no...over which we have no control. And I wonder if there are going to be changes or modifications going forward, if this is something where we can look at particularly working with the organizations around...both the organizations and your department around what data can we provide? When can we provide it? So it's calendared out and nobody's ever surprised about when or when we do or don't have it. And what is realistically authentic data that we can use to report on that is meaningful? Because we know these organizations are doing good work. How can we point to it? What can we point to to prove it? Might be the word I'm looking for. What can we point to to ensure that we all understand the good work?
Sure. I appreciate that, Ms. Samuels. I...that has been the purpose of the narrative reports from the partners, but we will certainly...I appreciate the idea of having sort of a data calendar because I like that and providing that to partners and having conversations back and forth with them. My...I'll be completely transparent. People lose their jobs in school systems because they harm children and because they mess with money. I'm committed that neither of those things will happen on my watch. And so my focus has really been, are the dollars we're spending being spent on the services that students are actually being provided in buildings before, during, or after school? Because I think that is my utmost responsibility to be a fiscal steward of taxpayer dollars. So I just wanted to put that out there. Happy to do all of these little adjustments as well, but really want to have the team focused on making sure students are getting what they need. For...if I could move along for Recommendation 3B. There was a recommendation to use a Board cover memo that I believe was created by the Purchasing and Contracting Office. We modified...we created something that was modified off of that and we feel like it still meets the need of having a performance review. And so we believe that we've actually met this recommendation, just not in the exact dotting of the top...dotting of an I or crossing of the T that the Office of Internal Performance Audit suggested. And I don't expect us to resolve everything during this conversation. I just wanted to...there are things that I wanted to share with you all and the office and I can continue to meet back and forth and come to resolution. It's quite normal for auditors and auditees to go back and forth to find resolution.
I agree that that is often the case. And I don't want to make a big deal about the formatting of the template, per se, but I do want to mention like one of the key areas that I thought was missing from the performance review was a description of any changes that were made to the services provided based off of the review and evaluation. So I do think that there really does need to be a spot in there where you are prompted as part of the template to enter that information to say, wait, so now we've assessed the goals and this is the progress we made and these are the tweaks that we think are relevant for this coming year to do even better.
I appreciate that. And as I mentioned, our evaluative process is more...is mostly about are they performing their services? The partners have their service packages that are aligned with our strategies and we try to ensure that they're doing that. And that is mostly how we evaluate them.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
One of the things that I've been thinking about in looking at these materials is like especially on these ones where we're having issues with getting the data in order to measure, right? Because if you look at the memo that you sent, there's goals where we have like report backs and then goals where there's just kind of silence on how we did, right? Because as you put it, the data wasn't there. We talked about that. But to me, a SMART goal, the word M is measurable, as everybody knows, and it strikes me as like we have SMART goals that aren't actually measurable, so they're what, SMART goals? And that's not quite right. So I love the idea of talking to the nonprofits about what data we can get, but then you just said something that just leaped out to me, which is like you're wanting to evaluate them on something a little different than the SMART goals, which is are they actually doing the things that you want them to do, the scope of work or process or whatever you wanted to call it? Why not just make the SMART goals align with what you want to evaluate them on instead of what you think?
That's a great question. So the...the equivalent of what you're suggesting would be to write a school improvement plan that didn't talk about necessarily student-based outcomes, but talked about what principals and teachers might be doing, right? And I think we want to...what...I mean, we could certainly think about that, but we tried to get our partners, and this was our first year because that's our first District Continuous Improvement Plan, to get them to align with that. And so I'm not saying that there isn't room for improvement. I'm just acknowledging that we believe that having everybody attempting to row in the same direction is really important.
Yeah, I don't disagree at all, but in the same...in the same conversation, you've mentioned that most of these aren't meant to be like academic programs. The academic outcomes aren't necessarily what you're looking for out of these programs is what I heard you say before, but then we're judging them in some cases have SMART goals that are directly tied to academic performance. And so I'm just saying like, I just feel like we should figure out what do...what do you and your team want to evaluate them on? And then have the goals match that. And the...I totally love the connections to the District Continuous Improvement Plan. That's great, but I don't want us to like be so tied to that that we're like over-engineering a system where we continue to have these blanks where we're not having the data to actually evaluate. So I just...I just hope that you'll consider just what is it that you actually expect these people to do and have that be the goal. And I also think there are some... And I also think there are some, you know, there are some data that are out there, like, that I just, it's literally sitting in my inbox for me to complete, but I still have issues with the name of the climate survey, the student success survey.
Successful.
Successful School Survey. God, one of these days. Which I am like so excited, like, I can't believe I can't remember the name, because I like, think that that's to me, like, so important. Like, to me, that's, that's it. Especially with these kind of programs, like, sense of belonging for these students is what we're trying to get here, so that they want to come to school and care and stay. So, so anyway, I think, I just, I urge your flexibility in what maybe existed in the past with the SMART goals, and what, we can match up with what we can do given existing resources. What actually want to track on, what data we actually have. I just want to open the door to, to that being that aim, so that way we're not making extra work or making you look at something that doesn't seem important to you or your team.
Understood and duly noted, I appreciate that.
Following up on that, I did notice a lot of the narratives, well, at least a few, said they really wanted access, help with their surveys. I don't know who want.
Yeah, we can follow up on that, because the team is, the team's a really responsive team. And we do have some staff that could help them with their survey construction. And so, I wasn't aware until I read the report that we had this ongoing need, but now that we know, we can address that.
Yeah, and maybe they should have told you. And also, following up too, that you want partners to have goals that are written as a theory of action. And that maybe those goals could have certain percentages.
Yes, they can.
And that that might help us
Mm-hmm.
to understand.
Yes, absolutely.
And how, give an example of that, how is that?
If we provide an affinity group to a group, a culturally specific affinity group opportunity for groups of students who are Latino and Latinx, Latina, they will report an increased sense of belonging in school. And we could then, as measured by, we could, we could have a survey, we could do a focus group. There's lots of way we, lots of ways we can get at that information, and we can help partners do that.
Okay, and I know it's, it's difficult to measure all these things.
Yes.
This isn't a math score, a math test, so I know it's hard.
I'm sure this happens, but do you, at what point, when you're seeing some of these percentages, percentages in here, is there a follow-up to try to figure out why? For an example, a few of them I looked at had sort of a higher behavioral overview uptick from the previous year, which to me suggests less about the student population and more about maybe the external things, like what's going on externally that maybe is driving something in the school? Or is there, is there a problem person in the school that needs to be looked at? Like, I mean, so does these numbers to you lead to additional?
We absolutely have conversations with partners all throughout the year.
Yeah.
And then we bring our partners together, let me not misspeak, three times a year, first quarter, second quarter, and third quarter, for conversations, information sharing, best-practice strategies, and teaching and learning. So, we do both of those things.
Okay. I noticed there was a meeting, I think, last week?
That was.
And it didn't happen?
That was, sure. That was the Racial Equity and Social Justice Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay.
That committee requires a quorum. It's a fifteen-member committee. When we were able to confirm attendance, we had three or four people attending. And the business that the committee needed to undertake at the first meeting was electing a chair and a co-chair. So, we are working feverishly to reschedule that meeting.
Would that be good meetings for us to observe, just to see what they discuss?
It, it could be, yes. What we, what, what the, if I'm remembering correctly, what the charter of that committee says is they will bring forward recommendations to the board. So, we'll work on that, but we need to get the, the minimum amount of people in this space so we can actually conduct committee business.
Okay.
There was a, there's a recommendation around contract, there are several recommendations that touch on contract management. I want to be clear, I was the contract manager when I first assumed these contracts, because I wanted that kind of oversight over them. I am not and have not been the contract manager for some time. So, I have a staff member that's a business operations analyst that is the contract manager. That staff member has a supervisor, our director of the department. And contract management conversations occur during their one-on-one meetings and with my one-on-one meeting with my director. So, those are things that are happening. And we worked really hard, because there was also a prior recommendation about, my understanding was when the audit was completed in 2020, there was someone who was identified as a contract manager who expressed they didn't know that. So, there, which was surprising to me when I, when Janice and I had that conversation. And so, what we have done, and what I've worked with HR on is, there's contract management language described in the job descriptions of my person who is the contract manager. And it is, she is aware that she's a contract manager, and she's doing that work, because I see the flow of the approvals and the emails and things like that. There was also a notation that the, the performance reviews weren't uploaded in Cobblestone. We were always intending to do that. We wanted the board to have the information before we uploaded it into the system. And those will all be uploaded by the fifteenth of this month. There is, this one was a little curious to us, recommendation four, and I'll explain why. When we brought forth the contract information and memo in June of 2024, each of the contracts contained SMART goals. And I, I know you remember that, because I remember specifically, Director Sullivan, you and Chair Wong commenting on that. And I, and the team remain a little confused about why we weren't marked as having met that standard when we met it. I get that we've made a shift towards the district continuous improvement plan, and that some of the goals as theories actions don't have percentages, although they're still written in a sort of if, then, this will happen. And so, we will ensure that there are percentages in the goals written as a theory of action or their counts, whichever one seems more appropriate. But we are just a little confused that, you know, having done that and met this in 2024, why it wasn't marked as such?
I have a question. So, if you've completed, but then the next time you don't do it, is it still completed?
I'm not used to an audit that continues to look at the same thing over and over again after it's been met. So.
So, you feel like once it's done?
And it wasn't, it wasn't an intended backslide. We wanted to align with the theory of action and the district continuous improvement plan. We did not have intention to not have SMART goals, or goals that didn't have every component of a SMART goal, because the goals written of theories act, as theories of actions can have that. It's just, it was the same as the, I believe, the timing of communication with the last audit committee meeting, where everything looked as though it was outstanding, and these were things that we were pushing through the process to get to the board's attention, right? So, I, again, just, we can talk offline about it or online, but I just, the team is just really curious about that. But we are, that being said, we will make sure that for next cycle, goals written as a theory of action will contain data that we can provide or we can access, and we'll have the percentages in all of them to make sure that this is met.
I guess it's a misunderstanding about, we're used to SMART goals, and then this theory of action was, was hard to relate
Sure.
as clearly to it.
I, I accept that, and we'll own that. So, I could have, in hindsight, which is always 2020, sometimes it's 2010, you know? I could have provided information to let you know something different was coming that had a different format, so that there, it wouldn't have been possibly the shock that it was. So, I'll, I'm able to, able and willing to own something when I do it.
I'm going to ask a question this direction really quickly. Does, because I can't remember off the top of my head, does the district's continuous improvement plan include SMART goals?
Yes, it does.
So, there are goals with which, specifically with which to align?
There are.
SMART goals.
Mm-hmm. They're only in four areas, however, right? So, in, for the district continuous improvement plan, there's attendance, literacy, mathematics, and ninth grade success. So, a partner may be working on strategies that may improve attendance, and they also may be working on strategies that might improve sense of belonging, which isn't captured in the district plan, but it's still something very important.
If I may, I think, for me, this is obviously brand-new, but I like the SMART goals and the percentages, because even if a plan says raise attendance by fifty percent, and we raise it by four percent, we're still seeing, like Dr. Armstrong was talking about at the most recent board meeting, the importance of seeing the upward trajectory is not to change, like, really important board goals, not to lessen them, because we didn't hit it right away.
Right.
But to keep those high, because we have such high hopes and high achievement goals for all of our students, keep them high, and then just keep sort of plodding along. And so, for me, at least, seeing the percentages and seeing the SMART goals linked to everything is important, because both when I'm seeing numbers that aren't going the right direction, to be able to ask, is your team investigating why they're not going in the right direction? Because it could unearth other issues that need to be addressed that are outside of this, but still important to this. But then also, seeing things going in the right direction is the positive work we want to see happening. And it may not, it may not overnight get everything we hope for, but it, we're still seeing it go, so.
Sure, I, I understand that the board has strong interest in this, and will make it happen. You know, this was our first time with the shift, and it obviously didn't happen in all of the cases. So, you know, again, we'll own that. We pointed partners to our plan, we asked them to do something, and it didn't always happen in each case. So, again, I'll own that. There is the, a recommendation number eight around deliverables. So, we recognize this issue with having the quarterly data submitted and a report sent in. And we'll just continue to work on it, is, is what I can tell you. You know, it is, it's important, and we want to make sure it happens.
I want to do a quick jump back to the recommendation for Dr. Adams is, what does, is your team getting what they need to assess whether the partners are? I don't know exactly what terminology we're using, but is your team getting the data and information that they need to assess whether partners are meeting the basic standards of the work that they're being contracted for? Do you have what you need?
That's a great question, I so appreciate it. Some days I feel like I do, and some days I feel like I don't, if I'm being honest. What I would say is, we perform announced and unannounced visits and observations, and have consistent communication with principals to observe and make sure partners are providing services to students. So, in that vein, we go out and get the information that we need, and we have capacity to do that. Although, the contracts, I, we have, I have staff members for whom this contractual work isn't, the oversight isn't their work, but they help us with, you know, it's sort of like when we do school visits. It's, it can be an all-hands-on-deck experience from the academic team in the central office. It doesn't matter, you know, I'll go in an English classroom, I'll go in a math classroom. I'm not in charge of English, and I'm not in charge of math, but I was a teacher. So, I believe we have what we need, and I sometimes wonder if our partners have what they need in order to provide us with some of the information. And so, that's a question that we can, that's a conversation we can have with partners. We have a quarterly meeting coming up pretty soon. And we can certainly ask that of them, to see how we can improve and partner better to make sure everybody's getting what they need, and you all have clear communication and information around how things are going.
Yeah, I did get a feeling, I think I said it already, that sometimes they don't know where to get what they need. So, that would be helpful.
I mean, and it takes a lot to work with us. Our partners have to go through all the work to get badges, they get, all their staff have back, as, as it should be. Their staff have background checks, they have to complete trainings in our Pepper system, just like annual, every year you do, you know, I get this ping in, on July first with my laundry list of trainings that I need to do before October thirty-first, or else I won't be able to get any work done.
And if we don't get them done, it actually reminds us, like, if I didn't do one on time, it pings you.
It reminds you and your supervisor when they're, when they're past due. So, we are working, we work really hard to get them set up with PPS emails and all those things. And we can certainly, I'm about continuous improvement, so we can get better at that, not a problem. There are a couple other recommendations around contract management. Again, and I just note that those responsibilities and the workflow to make sure that our contracts are managed properly are covered in one-to-one meetings between supervisors and staff. And so, I'm not sure, because those agendas sometimes have sensitive information on them beyond, you know, an update on contract implementation, I'm not sure how to meet this audit recommendation, other than to say this is actually happening. So, again, Ms. Hanson and I can go back and forth and come to kind of resolution on, on those items at touch.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Because looking at just the recommendation itself, it, and I see the request is provide a narrative describing, but, so forgive me. But I think that it says, like, to achieve this, we consider updating position descriptions, which you've said is done, and then include an evaluation of the performance of these responsibilities and annual performance evaluations. I'm a state employee, and we have like a really prescriptive annual performance evaluation that is like based on our job description and annual work goals. I'm assuming PPS has something similar.
Yes.
So, I feel like if, it doesn't seem like you necessarily, we necessarily need to get in the weeds on the one-on-one meetings, but more just having it, just saying, yeah, we went ahead and their annual performance evaluation now includes this? I'm missing something? I feel like, I feel like.
No, 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 and that has happened.
Oh, great, okay, great.
In terms of describing and providing feedback about employee performance for contract management in their annual evaluations has occurred.
Great.
So, I, I just want to, maybe I need to type that up for Janice, or whatever.
Well, we have to confirm, we have to see evidence to confirm the implementation. So, I would just need to take a look at those things.
Like the form or whatever?
I, I don't have the form. The form, the form does not have a line that says contract management and then comments. I can share the form we have, I've shared the position descriptions that have the contract responsibilities in them.
Is it hard to add it to the form?
I, I would have to talk to our, our HR team.
Okay.
Because our, our evaluation is not set up in the way you describe, right? It is not for central office staff, it is not a list of competencies with comments for each.
Okay.
Is, is what I would say.
Like, less linked to, like, as mine's linked to my job description and goals for the year? Yours is more just everybody gets the same form kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
That is tricky. Maybe we could.
I'm an employee here also, and, you know, Director Sullivan does my performance review each year. And so, I'm pretty sure we all start out with the same template, which, I mean, is pretty blank in the template. So, what Patty and I have done is taken my position description and each of the key responsibilities and put that into there, and done evaluation on each of those. So, like, I, at least in, from my experience, there. there's opportunity to customize it, um, depending, but I'm not familiar with how it works for other classes of employees. I'm unrepresented. Maybe that makes a difference. So I can update my understanding, um, on the other, uh, classifications to see if there's similarities or if it, it is very, um, structured. My understanding was the same as mine, though.
It is, is the same. My, my team are also unrepresented employees, um, as am I, um, obviously. So it is.
As am I.
Yes. Um, it is, uh, at the moment, it is manager discretion, what they put into the evaluation and what they monitor. We don't have at the moment, um, structured competencies, again, that come from our Department of, um, Human Resources, for example. Uh, so, uh, I can certainly continue, I, I guess, you know, Janice and I, Janice, we can have ongoing conversation about what would it take? Because even if I put something in someone's evaluation, I couldn't necessarily share that with the Office of Audit, right? So I just have to think about how do we have this closed? Because my people are managing the contracts, money's not being wasted, they know they're managing the contracts, we're talking about the contract management. So I just need to know what we need to do in order to close these couple that have to do with, um, the contract management.
I'm committed to meeting with you very soon to be much more prescriptive. Thank you for that feedback.
I have a just question that came up, pretty simple one. Um, when I'm reading reports, I'm not sure when I, um, read about attendance and disciplinary, if that's like for the whole time they're in school or just for meeting with the group they're in that's like.
Oh, it's, it's usually, um, for the time they're in school.
So for, if, if it's attendance, it's not attendance at, say, the group, the after-school group?
Correct. It's, it's attendance at school.
In their whole school. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um, is there any, anymore? Yes, sorry.
I have a quick comment and question, um, to say, for me, what is most important is, you know, making sure that the issues that came up in the original audit are being addressed. And I don't think it needs to be, you know, exactly specific one way or another, but it sounds like maybe there's some disagreement on whether some of these are meeting those issues or not, which, you know, we can all talk about. But, um, you know, I think we all want it to be realistic and feasible, right? Um, and I had a question about, um, you said you do site visits, which is great. Uh, do you have the capacity to like do site visits for all of the?
We do.
That's amazing.
We do visit all of the partners.
Yeah. And is that something that you have documentation of that you can use towards some of these recommendations perhaps?
I, I know we keep, we've kept records of, um, when we visited and what we saw. I just, I haven't been deeply involved in the process, but I do know it happens because I sometimes get the invitations to tag along. So I, I will look into that for sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else?
I was gonna bounce off, I think it was something that you'd said, um, about making sure that you mark down or somehow put down what worked and didn't work and analyze why.
Mm-hmm.
Because you could learn, other people could learn from that, too.
Yes.
Um, and I think, is there a place for that?
We can make a place for it.
Yeah.
You know, this is, this is when I mentioned earlier, like we modified the performance review template. We can, or in the partner narrative that we want from them, we can ask them to describe what worked, what were some barriers, what were some successes? We can certainly, yes.
Because especially when it's hard to have a certain percent of growth or not in the work that's being done, that would be really helpful.
Sure. I mean, it's just like, I think, I think of our partners as overall supporting student and school success, right? And so what I know from being in a turnaround school as an elementary assistant principal, I mean, schools have been taken over by the state and then I was told to be there, um, as happens in those situations in other states. Um, people are working really hard and the data don't always move even though you're working really, really hard and really, really smartly. So, um, we will continue to work with the partners on the narrative format to see if we can gather information around what's feeling really successful and what's feeling like barriers so we could look at patterns. Um, I'll share just because I, I thought it was cool. Um, going into last year, when I still had the research and evaluation team, I asked them if there was a way to create like a Yelp review, review for every partner. So they created something and principals were able to rate the partners and leave little reviews. And we use that as a part of thinking about whether or not, is another data point when we thought about whether we wanted to renew or not. Because we do want, um, there to be successful relationships between our building leaders and their staffs and the, and the community-based organizations and their teams. Um, and so I just wanted to share that because I thought it was pretty cool.
That's a really cool idea. Is, have you thought about, I know it's a brand new idea, very cool idea, having the students also do, I mean, all these kids love this online stuff.
That is true. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that. Hadn't thought about that, but I certainly can look into it.
Maybe it's too much information, but, um, it's a really cool idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate, as always, the opportunity to come and talk about the work that we're doing. As I shared with our data, I think some really great things are happening here, um, in, in the district. And I'm just still so happy to be here four years later, uh, missing the sunshine a little bit, but still happy to be here, um, and, and doing good work on behalf of our students and staff. So thank you all. You all have a great evening.
Can I say one, one quick thing?
Sure.
Um, oh, go ahead. You want to say that? When, when I started in July, I just sort of met everybody and I didn't really have an opportunity to understand people's specific backgrounds. I knew everybody here must have an incredible background because they're here and they're doing the work. But tonight was the first time I heard of your extraordinarily long and noble background.
Oh.
And my father-in-law spent until he retired his whole career in a special ed classroom in Illinois. And so I just wanted to say I'm impressed and very grateful.
Thank you. I actually thought I was going to spend my entire career in special ed too. And then a superintendent I worked for decided otherwise. And here I am. So, serve at the pleasure. It's, it's by, I'm just grateful.
Yeah. And I just wanted to say thank you. And again, I hope the spirit as you two move forward is how do we make sure that the process we're developing is one that doesn't create extra work, but just becomes something that fits what's already happening and holds us and our partners accountable on behalf of our kids.
Sure. Yes.
So I do encourage you to find, if there's that moment where you're thinking, this is just extra work, like, then, okay, what do we do to make it so that we're actually just holding accountable to the work that's happening? I think that to me is, um, something I hope that you two will keep in mind.
Absolutely.
Working on this because, um, we're all, you made a comment earlier about wanting to be in this for the kids and, um, you know, that you're always going to do the right thing. Um, and I super appreciate that, but you still have to have processes to back that up.
Absolutely.
That's just the way it goes with public service. So thank you so much for, the two of you for working on it. We really appreciate it.
All righty. Next time we see you, these are all going to be green. Actually, we're not even going to have to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Uh, and does anyone else, well, before he leaves, anybody else have something to ask Dr. Adams? Okay, I think we've, we've done it. All right. Um, what else? One last thing. I want to confirm that our next audit committee meeting is scheduled for December 4th at 5:00 PM. Janice, let me know that Jennifer will not be able to attend. Sorry for that.
I'll be attending virtually.
End point?
And I have to attend virtually.
And you will be virtual, but.
Unfortunately, yes.
Virtual is fine.
I will be.
Not as fun, but, um, so, um, yeah, but, yeah, Janice also, Janice tells me everything. Janice says they have a meeting so that, uh, Jennifer will know what's going on. And I want to thank you all. That was a great conversation. And it's a hard one because we know that Dr. Adams is doing the very best he can do, but we want it to show so that everybody knows that. And I really appreciate everybody's comments. Very well done.
And I'll get a meeting scheduled with Evan. So, um, we'll do some onboarding. So he'll be fully prepared for our next one to chime in.
Quality control.
Great. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.